Order, map quick, this hall room.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Roma. Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan. Councilman Sedanum. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, six, no president, map quick. At this time, we have prayer, your ladies and ladies, by, and then by council, Gonzalez. Maybe also, please.
Almighty God, as legislative for our community, may a strong sense of justice and fair play permeate all with you. Above all, may we see down your holy will, give us the strength to follow it regardless of all human considerations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public speaking, any taxpayer or president like to step forward, the city council, any matter? Please state your name and address my record, please.
Good evening, my name is Jose Rodriguez, 618 Jackson Avenue, here in Elizabeth.
Aye.
Good, I just want to speak about something that I heard at the Board of Education. I understand that two government bodies are separate, but I still want to bring out in public also to inform the city council and those who live at home. On Thursday, January 17th, I attended the regularly, the regular Board of Education meeting. And once that body went into private session, they waited until everyone went home, no one was watching. There's a citizen who goes in and takes the meetings and publishes it online for public to see. When that gentleman left also, they decided to allow, or actually, where Mary One, who was the, was the president of the Board of Education, had resigned, and they installed Anthony Padlo, when no one was watching, and behind, wow, really to try to pull the ball over, I believe, the public side. What the public key is that when Mary One resigned, which she resigned technically at that meeting, no, not less than an hour after, they installed a new Board of Education member, which is completely within their right and within the law, but which I believe is morally nothing like what they did. They have over a month, about 30 days, to alert the public to vacancy, to grab anyone who's interested, interview any parties that have been interested in, and then therefore pick the best candidate, which would be that, you know, that would do the best job for the students of Elizabeth. I believe that only waiting an hour or less and rightfully installing a new member is not morally anything like I said the correct thing to do. Well, it's, well, they're right to do so, they shouldn't have been allowed. Also, at that meeting, only one Board of Education member actually spoke up against it, Miss Bachelis, which to me is shocking that the other seven just went along and kind of just ramped it down. So what I'm asking, even, even though I understand, I said before, there, you know, there are separate governing bodies, I wish that somehow the city council could, could, they could talk about it and maybe issue some kind of proclamation to let the public know that even though certain, certain governing bodies are within their rights to pick whoever they want, that they should follow moral ethical rules, they should also understand that this gentleman lost the election, he came in fifth place, so the community said no to this person, he was put up, I think I know, was put up for election, and they said no to him, and then they still reported him after the fact. So, like I said before, I know they're too separate, and a lot of times government bodies don't like to mix, you know, they like to stay separate. But I would hope that any justice like this would not go unnoticed and not, and talked about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the question. Before you, before the next person come up, I'm like a race guy, the council and the senator. And also, I just wanted to get the confirmation of, all right. This is a regular meeting of the city council, as incorporated in the annual meeting notice of 2013, which were filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the board on December 27, 2012. I sent to the Star Legend Home Leadership Committee, the five really, person up to open for the meeting board, our new jersey. Okay, now, we're still going on a public session, if you'd like to, the city council, and, and some taxpayer or resident, please say please.
7:50 per hour, good evening.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on what Jose said, I'm almost as sure as he said that what happened, Jose was too humble to mention that he was the next vote getter. The moral ethical thing, if we're truly representative of the people, would have been to give that decision to Jose. Again, moral and ethical thing would not have been to give it to the fifth person, but to give it to the next person. To follow up on that, there's an organization in Elizabeth called Elizabeth Education Organizing Committee, and we have collected 574 signatures petitioning the Board of Ed to change the agenda for public portion of the meeting. And we've presented this petition at eight board meetings in a row, but we have not gotten any response from the board whatsoever. Currently, board policy is that public participation is the last thing on the agenda, and citizens must sign up before 6:00 PM, and many times the meeting does not start until 7:30 or 8:00, whatever time they deem it's time to start the meeting. The board has been provided copies of the petition for eight months in a row, yet they refuse to acknowledge the voices of 574 members of the public and people they would like, like to represent. I don't know if you're aware, the Board of Education commences every meeting with a capoeira of students performing, which by the way requires the students and the staff to stay later, and many of those students and staff need to be at their schools by 7:00 o'clock the next morning. Awards are given, people who have nothing to do with Elizabeth Board of Education are honored, and other types of people are acknowledged. The petition to the board asks that the student performances be done in another venue and at another time. I am a teacher, I, I taught Elizabeth for 31 years, there was no greater honor that I could have had. Those students need to be honored in a separate, kind of, place, not in the board meeting. The petition also requests that the public portion of the meeting be moved to the top of the agenda, but the public portion of the meeting, regular public portion of the meeting is last on the agenda, and that means that there are no parents guarding, sort of, children to take care of, because often a meeting goes to 10:30, 11:00 at night, and then the public is allowed to address the board. This obviously disregard for public input is disturbing to the citizens of Elizabeth who want to involve the education of our children. There are many federally funded programs, and the new RAP system, which has been set up to accommodate facilities in rooms for schools that are not recording, require grants and input. So I would like our concerns to be placed in the public record of this esteemed body and ask for any of your help, support, or suggestions that you could provide to support this cause. I have, I-
Yes, it's ready for, yes, I'm just sure, please, and you say, quick. And, uh... Thank you. Yeah, we hear you crying, and it's a shame that, it seems like they don't give the public a chance to speak in that way at, of course, at the end of the meeting. You know, I wish we had some jurisdiction that we would see if we could have changed it, but-
Mr. President?
Certainly, it's, it's a shame that they don't allow the public to really get a chance to voice their opinion. Yes, councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. If, if, if my colleagues agree, can we do a resolution at the end of the meeting, a friendly resolution, supporting the work of the citizens who signed the petition, and then send that down to the State Board of Education and to other elected officials, or 20th legislative district, and also Congress people and any other senator, because the Elizabeth Board of Education receives a lot of funding from, not only the state of New Jersey, but also for the federal government, and to deny the public the opportunity to express their, their First Amendment right is an abomination to the United States of America. So I'm just saying that, if hopefully my colleagues can agree that regardless of what their views are, they should allow the public to speak, and they should allow the public to speak first. And I have heard this from many parents who want to speak regarding issues to go to the board, but the meeting, the public should be so late, and just like the speaker just mentioned, they have school age children, and so they're calling, you know, this political gang when they're just trying to educate the child. So I thank you for bringing this to us, and hopefully at the end of the meeting, we can do a friendly resolution supporting their efforts. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, okay, anyone else like to speak with the city council, any matter? Please state your name and address, for instance.
Maria, that's Maria, 321 Westfield Avenue.
Westwood Avenue?
Westfield Avenue.
Okay.
I'd sort of second everything that they both just said, and what Councilwoman just said, too, that I have parents who go to the Board of Education meetings, like everyone, and really go with the top of the line, back to our stuff. Then they can do this corruption stuff to me, I mean, they have nothing to hide, do all that before you go to private, because I am, I mean, his parents, they're up from 6:00, not 5:00, I guess, and that. So at that point in time, it doesn't make sense for them to go to private, and then they kind of, one, their member step down, and then another member step up, you know, and that, that doesn't, why I do that before you go to private, doesn't make any sense. But also, I'm here, I know there's a way that we can get any DPD to come to Elizabeth, New Jersey. You know, because we need DPD services for, you know, that division of development's disabilities, and we need more services for especially children to live in Elizabeth, like mine. That's all I can think of right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council, any matter? President, taxpayer, please step forward, state your name and address, same note, hold the motion, please, open here.
Ordinance number 4354, authorize a refunding bond ordinance in an amount not to exceed $12,650,000 for the refunding of certain general improvement bonds, Series 2005, of the city, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $12,650,000 refunding bonds of the city for financing the costs thereof.
You hear the reading of order number 4354, anyone here for the public like to speak on order, order number 4354? Same note, hold the motion.
Ordinance number 4355, authorize an amendment to chapter 10.8.10 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled "Four Way Stop Intersections," specifically to add a multi-way stop at the intersection of Adams Avenue and Mary Street.
You hear the order, reading of order number 4355, anyone here like to address, speak on order number 4355, same note, hold the motion, please.
Ordinance number 4356, authorize an amendment to chapter 10.8.20 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled "Stop Intersection Designated Specifically to Add Clarkson Avenue and Fillmore Street."
You hear the reading of order number 4356, anyone here for, like to address, speak on order number 4346, 56, same note, hold the motion, please.
Ordinance number 4357, amend ordinance number 4340 adopted in November 13, 2012, which authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Daniel M. Bravo, 1051 Lafayette Street, specifically to revise the meeting's bounds description.
You hear the reading of order number 4357, anyone here like to speak on order number 4357, same note, hold the motion.
Ordinance number 4358, rescind ordinance number 4273 adopted January 10, 2012, which authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Magdalena Gutierrez, 506 Fulton Street.
You hear the reading of order number 4358, anyone here like to speak on order number 4358, same note, hold the motion, please. It says, my colleagues, I will dispatch with the reading of the petition and communication, and reports of city officers move on to orders on first meeting.
Ordinance number 4359, authorize the establishment of chapter 10.8.111 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled "Do Not Block Intersection," specifically to add the intersection and south Board Street and Garden Street vehicles from passing traffic at the intersection at the height of fresh out.
You hear the reading of order number 4359, what's your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a call, Mr. President.
Move next second, any comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can see, this is the establishment, a new chapter in the Code of the City of Elizabeth. I've had it from over in South Forest Street and Garden Street, particularly doing brush out of traffic, where it is impossible for vehicles or pedestrians to cross at that intersection. Upon looking through the city code, we found out there was nothing. We tried to look for some signs, but we had nothing in the city code to be, to allow us to. So after researching, I'm happy to see that we were able to come up with something, it'll be a first, and I'm sure this will be helpful not only in my board, but throughout the city, I'm sure there are other areas where they're having the same problem. So I hope my colleagues will support this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanum.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven eyes, one pass. Public hearing, your fifty consideration of the foregone one shall take place at the city council meeting, to be held Tuesday, February 26, 2013, at 7:30 PM. Orders on final passes.
Ordinance number 4354, authorize a refunding bond ordinance in an amount not to exceed $12,650,000 for the refunding of certain general improvement bonds, Series 2005 of the city, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $12,650,000 in refunding bonds of the city for financing the costs thereof.
You hear the reading of order number 4354, what's your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a call, Mr. President.
Move next second, any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanum.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven eyes, one pass, or final passes.
Ordinance number 4355, authorize an amendment to chapter 10.28.10 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled "Four Way Stop Intersections," specifically to add a multi-way stop at the intersection of Adams Avenue and Mary Street.
You hear the reading of order number 4355, what's your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a call, Mr. President.
Move next second, any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanum.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven eyes, one pass, or final passes.
Ordinance number 4356, authorize an amendment to chapter 10.8.20 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled "Stop Intersection Designated Specifically to Add Clarkson Avenue and Fillmore Street."
You hear the reading of order number 4355, what's your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a call, Mr. President.
Move next second, any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanum.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven eyes, one pass, or final passes.
Ordinance number 4357, amend ordinance number 4340 adopted in November 13, 2012, which authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Daniel M. Bravo, 1051 Lafayette Street, specifically to revise the meeting's bounds description.
You hear the reading of order number 4357, what's your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a call, Mr. President.
Move next second, any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanum.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven eyes, one pass, or final passes.
Ordinance number 4358, rescind ordinance number 4273 adopted January 10, 2012, which authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Magdalena Gutierrez, 506 Fulton Street.
You hear the order, you hear the reading of order number 4358, what's your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a call, Mr. President.
Move next second, any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanum.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven eyes, one pass, or final passes. Do be listened.
Request permission from the Director of Local Government Services to accept a dedication by Ryder in the fiscal year 2000 for donations, acceptance of bequest and gifts from the Housing Authority of the City of Elizabeth to support the African-American History Month proclamation costs. Authorize the Board of Contract to Snap-on Industrial Division of ITSC Holdings LLC, Chicago, Illinois, for the purchase of industrial and commercial equipment supplies under the Somerset, Somerset County COA for the period January 18, 2013 through December 27, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $100,000. Authorize the Board of Contract to Thor Tractor Company, Frenchburg, New Jersey, for the purchase of parts and repairs for lawn and ground equipment for various departments for the period January 17, 2013 through June 28, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
You hear the reading of the resolution, what's your pleasure?
Move the resolutions for a call, Mr. President.
Move next second, any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanum.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven eyes, one pass, or final passes.
Authorize the Board of Contract to E. Ralph &amp; Sons in Carney, New Jersey, for purchase of medical supplies and equipment, health education and training for various departments for the period January 11, 2013 through December 16, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $60,000. Authorize the Board of Contract to Northeast Auto and Truck Parts LLC, Bayonne, New Jersey, for the purchase of motor motor parts and accessories for the Department of Public Works for the period January 24, 2013 to February 25, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $30,000. Authorize the Board of Contract to Motor Oil Communications and Electronics Board, New Jersey, for the purchase of communications equipment and accessories for various departments for the period February 1, 2013 through May 1, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000. Amend the resolution adopted August 28, 2012, awarding the contract to firefighter 1, Spark, New Jersey, for the purchase of mass meters and service air tanks for the police department at a cost of $100,000, specifically to purchase additional equipment at an additional cost of $150,000, increasing the amount of the contract to $250,000. Authorize the reward of a third party contract to EIC Inspection Agency Corporation, Jersey City, New Jersey, to provide elevator inspection services for a two-year period commencing March 25, 2013, at a cost not to exceed 50% of the Department of Community Affairs fee for elevator subcoating inspections. Authorize the Board of Contract to Aramark Uniform Services Division of Aramark Uniform and Career Apparel LLC, Burbank, California, for the furnishing of rental local work uniform for various departments for a three-year period at a cost not to exceed $85,000. Amend the resolution adopted January 22, 2013, awarding the contract to David Fire Systems Inc., Hackensack, New Jersey, for the purchase of fire alarm services at a cost not to exceed $100,000, specifically to correcting that of the contract to $200,000. Reject all bids received on January 8, 2013, for furnishing of miscellaneous hardware supplies for various departments and authorize the purchasing agent to utilize the state contract available for this commodity. Amend the resolution adopted September 27, 2011, awarding the contract to WW Ranger Trains, New Jersey, for industrial maintenance, repair, operations, supplies and equipment for various departments for the period September 15, 2011 through September 14, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $120,000, specifically to extend the term of the contract to February 28, 2014, and increase the total cost not to exceed $350,000. Authorize proper city officials to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the county union to use the Union County Courthouse complex to hold the maximum of four antenna for use in a CCTV camera network at no cost to the county. Authorize the Board of Contract to WWCS International Inc., New Jersey, for the purchase of radio communication equipment and accessories for various departments for the period February 1, 2013 through May 1, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $40,000.
You hear the reading of the resolution, what's your pleasure?
Move the resolution to a call, Mr. President.
Move next second, any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanum.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven eyes, one pass, or final passes.
Authorize the Board of Contract to the Law Firm of Long Grasso Depositing LLC, Rosemont, New Jersey, to provide the city with employment council services for the period February 15, 2013 through February 14, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $60,000. Permit the historic Metamorris Elizabeth Special Improvement District to conduct a festival and car show to be held Saturday of August 17, 2013, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with a rain date on Sunday of August 18, 2013. Authorize the Board of Contract to Harley-Davidson of Long Branch, Long Branch, New Jersey, for furnishing of four 2013 Harley-Davidson FLHTP electric auto police motorcycles for equal for the police department in the amount of $75,728. Authorize the tax collector to credit senior citizen disability and rebetting tax deductions for the tax year 2012 pursuant to a delineated list submitted January 14, 2013, in a total amount of $500. Authorize the tax collector to credit refund widow of a veteran deduction and senior citizen deduction for tax year 2013 in the amount of $500 on the property located at 14 and a half South Greed Street. Authorize the tax collector to credit refund of widow of a veteran deduction and senior citizen deduction for tax year 2013 in the amount of $500 on the property located at 421423 Doyle Street. Authorize the tax collector to refund credit and overpayment of taxes for tax year 2012 on the property located at 322 Pine Street in a total amount of $1,647. Authorize a resolution determining the form and other details of not exceeding $2,600,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Elizabeth and providing for the sale to the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust and State of New Jersey pursuant to the state fiscal year 2013 New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust financing program for funding of the city's 3rd Avenue Combined Sewer Modification Project. Authorize the execution and delivery of loan agreements to be executed by the City of Elizabeth and each of the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trusts and the State of New Jersey acting by and through the Department of Environmental Protection and further authorizing the execution and delivery of an SRO agreement all pursuant to the state fiscal year 2013 New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust financing program for funding the city's 3rd Avenue Combined Sewer Modification Project. Authorize the proper city officials to execute an agreement with the Urban League of Union County, Elizabeth, to provide funds in the amount of $22,000 to be used for case management services- to be used for case management services to provide direct short-term rental assistance to individuals, families at risk for homelessness for the period July one, two thousand and twelve to June thirty, two thousand and thirteen. Authorize the proper city officials to reprogram and transfer unexpected unexpended balances to the Community Development Bar and Rand Holding Account as listed on Schedule A on file with the City Court's Office in the amount of seven thousand three hundred four dollars thirty-eight cents. Authorize proper city officials to execute all documents necessary to provide an owner-occupied deferred payment loan to Cady Hall on property located at four seven four Henry Street in an amount not exceeding sixteen thousand dollars.
You have been reading the resolution, what is your pleasure?
Will the resolutions for a role, Mr. President?
Move next second, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven ayes, one resolution base.
Authorize proper city officials to execute a third-party agreement with McGill Real Estate Holdings LLC, Elizabeth, as required under the terms of the State Neighborhood Stabilization Program for the acquisition and rehabilitation of six vacant row houses located at ten dash sixteen Third Street to be rented to income-eligible persons for a deferred payment Neighborhood Stabilization Program loan in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Authorize proper city officials to execute a third-party agreement with Renaissance Apartments, Urban Renewal LLC, Elizabeth, as required under the terms of the State Neighborhood Stabilization Program for the demolition and construction of twenty residential units and one commercial space located at one seventy-one seventy-six First Street for a deferred payment Neighborhood Stabilization Program loan in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Authorize proper city officials to execute an agreement with the Elizabeth Development Company, Elizabeth, to provide funds to defray the loss associated with the pre-development expenses of architectural and market study for Brand New Day Renaissance Project for the period July one, two thousand and twelve to June thirty, two thousand and thirteen, in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand fifty dollars. Authorize an amendment to a resolution adopted September eleventh, two thousand and twelve, awarding a community development bar grant contract to the Elizabeth Board Presbyterian Center Inc. to administer the agency's senior enrichment program and the God of Gathering Room program, specifically to extend the term of the contract to December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Authorize an amendment to a resolution adopted September eleventh, two thousand and twelve, awarding community development bar grant contract to the Elizabeth Development Company, granting funds to Old Historic Trust in the amount of one hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars fourteen cents and shot on Hope Care's CDC project in the amount of three hundred thirty thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars specifically to extend the term of the contracts to December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Authorize an amendment to a resolution adopted October twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, granting the Urban League of Union County an emergency solutions grant funds in the amount of seventy-eight thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars, specifically to extend the term of the contract to December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Authorize the discharge of the E. Port Combo Program awarded to the City on the property located on one fifty-first Street. Authorize the planning board in conjunction with the City's planner to conduct a preliminary study to determine whether Morris Avenue Corridor is an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to N. J. S. A. forty-eight colon twelve dash one and Zach, the local redevelopment and housing law. Authorizing order of contract to S. N. A. General Contracting, Elizabeth, for the maintenance and or repair of roofing on city-owned buildings for a two-year period in an amount not exceeding three hundred fifty-four thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars. Authorizing order of contract to Hatch Mount McDonald, Melbourne, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering services in connection with the review of super applications for a one-year period with costs to be paid by applicants through the S. R. O. established with the City at no cost to the City. Authorize settlement and workers' compensation litigation matter or Reno, various the City of Elizabeth in the total amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars.
You have been reading the resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table two items on Brand New Day Renaissance for four hundred and fifty thousand and the one that makes it for one hundred and twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, there's a hold on the project for Brand New Day for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars by Councilwoman Torres and second by Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti. Roll call on that place.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Sir.
Sir.
Seven ayes. Seven ayes. Okay, do you have comments on the question?
Will the resolution?
Roll call. Roll, roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven ayes, one resolution base.
Standish handicap parking space in front of the premises located at three eighteen Amity Street. Appoint Lisa A. Forciello, Elizabeth, as a parking enforcement officer for the Parking Authority, A. Utility Bills.
You have been reading the resolution, what is your pleasure?
Will the resolutions for a role, Mr. President?
Move next second, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven ayes, one resolution base, commentation? Oh. Yeah.
Thank you.
Before Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti asked for a resolution to pass on the school information that they at the they have a problem being heard at the at the Elizabeth Board of Education. Speaker speaking. Councilman Mazza.
Yeah, Mr. President, being aware of the subject, with the respect that Councilman allows Patricia Perkins-Gusti. The speaker that came this evening tonight, she also presented a copy of petitions, if I understood them correctly. I don't mind to support certain things, but I have to do some research. I could just come before City Council or before the Board of Education, I say. In the City of Elizabeth, the council, it looks upside down the way I like it to be done. So, I don't vote very often to the Board of Education for the many years that I've been an employee, to exception. A couple of times when my team became champions of one time they got rid of the Super Club's birthday and I brought my troops back to the Board of Education and we established the birthday, not only on one person, but many other persons. So, if you celebrate a birthday for one, you gotta celebrate a birthday for everybody else. That was the issue, and that was other time I went there. Usually I don't know as something that is worthwhile for me to spend time. That's why we elect an elected official, we trust in all of us, the citizens, to do the right judgment, just like the councilman from the first table to items. You know, it's in this world that I can understand the reason why, but I also don't know why we table something for whatever reason, so we can discuss and be able to go over that. We all voted in favor of something like that, Mr. President. Something good happening in the Board of Education when we honor the children. Children came before City Council, the marching band. What I really enjoy from those people, to come here. Tomorrow, the fifteenth, on Friday, the football team is going to be in the mayor's office. The mayor's going to treat them for pizza and soda. It's a great thing, it's different feeling. There's three different feeling. A, joyous, victorious, vindictive, whatever, all kinds of words, or whatever you want to use another language. When you win on a field, then it's time to celebrate because our kids, they're getting dressed. Mommy and daddy become involved with our community, so they go to places in order to celebrate. They don't do this every morning to go until ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night. This is my personal feeling as an engineer, and I'm sure Francisco, as a former principal, vice-principal, an engineer also, in a classroom. I probably agree or might be disagree with certain thing. I would like to respect, because she was also my colleague as a teacher, I know her for many years, but I think we rushed again to do something, we should be able to see the facts. And I'd like to see with the petitions, for while some of these people have signed the petitions. And then, Patricia, I will overwhelmingly support, but just to put something in right now, I don't feel comfortable until my conscience has been weighed in another way, I usually vote. I don't care about politics or whatever, but, you know, maybe a pre-council meeting, the next meeting, you could pass whatever resolution, but at least to get the facts straight. This is my opinion and my feeling, so everybody's entitled to each opinion and torts your idea. And let your conscience be your guide, that's what's said, so that I, you know, you know me by now. That's it, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman, I respect your opinion, what we have heard from three people, citizens that came here tonight with the concern of not being heard at the Board of Education meeting. And I think that's totally wrong. I think they're trying just to voice their opinion. I'd like to come here traveling and we allow citizens, resident, to speak their mind. We hear them, and try to address as concerned and issue of the best of ability. And I think that the Board of Education, all residents, and citizens, the same, same right. And Councilwoman had, had expressed her concern to pass a resolution not even any councilman here have the opportunity to say yay or nay on that resolution, once she, she make a motion. And President, so, once she does that, and we'll have Councilwoman, as you know, who rules well, I I'm going to grant her that opportunity, like I would do any other, any other councilman. I, I don't think it would be in my power, right, to disallow that, since she has asked for that. And all we have to do is to say yay or nay for which one it goes through. Councilman Sedanion, say anything.
I just wanted to say, I'm all in favor to support recommendation, you know, just for the Board of Education to, to move the public speaking. And as early as five o'clock, I was making a media for the results. I think it's totally fair across the board. My only concern is that we'd like to see, I guess, like the exact resolution, the exact paper, or exactly what I'm voting for. And it is just on that one topic, I'm fine with it personally, but you know, I still think of the recommendation. But it's just as far as vote for a resolution policy that before us. And personally, from my own conscience too, I would love to read what they submitted. So, you know, I respect my company. I don't know if it's hostile just to wait for the next, to have something before us and the next three councilmen be presented before us. And how I said, if it's a resolution just to support public speaking for the recommendation, for us to do it earlier, I have no problem supporting it. It's just to see it in front of me.
Mr. President. I'm sorry, Mr. President, the speaker was very clear. That's all the residents, they want simply that the public speech, speaking portion of the Elizabeth Board of Education meetings be moved up front so that the residents can come and speak. We don't see any resolutions before we vote on them. We get a letter or an advice, and then the resolutions are basically done after we vote. The Law Department basically doesn't do the resolutions after we vote. So, we don't see any resolutions. What we simply get from the City is a simple letter saying we want this and we want that. And then the resolutions are drafted after we vote on them. So, I think the speaker was very clear. She came to this body out of duress, basically stating that there's five hundred people, and even if there wasn't a petition, I get many phone calls. I attend the Board of Education meetings from time to time. The public session has to wait, way after the meeting, you have to come and sign your name well in advance, which is ludicrous. That, that, that's hindering free speech here in America. As an African-American who was forefathers and foremothers were slaves in this country, I know suppression, and that is a form of suppression. When you're telling people to come two hours before the meeting and sign your name before you speak, and sign the topic, what you gonna speak about? It's like, give me a break, too many people fought and died in this country, so that would not take place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, anyone else to make a comment, if you're tired of my you can make a motion, send your motion on there.
Move, I move the resolution in the form that the residents stated simply allowing for the public session to be moved up front. Thank you, Mr. President.
I vote, I'm voting out, I'll say. Can we have a vote for?
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, seven ayes, one resolution base. Memorial for Shirley as a former punch road, Carol Moyne and Bruce D. To honor me, Pinson, Pinson, Carlo Marabella, Amadee, Carlo, 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 my biggest, Carmelo Carmen Sasso, Mary, and Ed Turner. Do you want a memorial? Do you have a memorial? Stand up. Push to the john.
I understand for the
Sorry, sorry. Good size. Head for the, yeah, head for it, sorry.
Seven minutes, Mr. President.